You're going to need Sunday dinner. All the old furniture there at the church. They're the sweetheart consoles that are in there, you know. Yeah, they're under, they got their, are they under construction on the road yet?
Wednesday.
Mr. Reeves. I just washed my hands. So we're going to, uh... Thank you. So, uh... Perfect, perfect. How's Mr. Kurtrow today?
Jerry, how are you doing?
Pretty good, pretty good.
Can't be bad today like today.
You're, looks like you are, oh, I thought you were sitting beside Donnie there.
Practically is, I mean.
He'd be a good campaign manager. You tell me when. Okay, welcome back. We'd like to start this afternoon out with commissioner reports and comments. We'll start with Mr. Kiefer.
Nothing today.
Mr. Klein?
No comments, thank you.
Mr. Myers, Mr. Barr, Mr. Baker. Everything's good, okay. Let's go to reports from county staff. We have any staff in the area to care to provide a report? How are you this afternoon?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Fantastic. Just wanted to inform the commissioners that we had our 2018 bond sale this morning at 11:00 a.m. It was for $14,485,000, and that was from the budget that was approved last May in 2017. It was a competitive sale. We had nine bidders, and the interest cost was 3.05%. So, just wanted to make you aware, we had the sale, it went well, and we are pleased with the interest rate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of the $14,485,000, do you have a rundown of what that debt's for?
I do, I don't have it with me right now. $12 million of it is tax-supported bonds, and the remaining is self-supported bonds.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other staff reports?
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Jim Hobus, Chief Operations Officer. I'm with Stephanie Stone, Director of Health and Human Services, and Debbie Peyton, Deputy Director of Human Resources. Commissioner, we bring an item before you today under staff comments due to the necessity that this meet the open enrollment requirements. If you recall, in the fall of 2017, and then continuing through the month of November, the human resources staff, with significant assistance from the county's attorney's office, worked diligently and at expedited pace to review, amend, and bring before the board over thirty very important policies for a review and then subsequent approval. Occasionally, when we roll out a new policy, we learn the policy may have provisions that were not thoroughly vetted. This is the case with policy EB-15, Employee Health Benefit Credits. So after further review of EB-15 by senior staff and leadership, it's become clear that the provisions of the new policy may not have been thoroughly vetted during the review process. Accordingly, I have asked HR staff to make a few revisions to EB-15, and please be assured that the measures will be in place to ensure that every employee will have an opportunity to make necessary corrections to their election of health benefit credits if they have already submitted the paperwork. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Stone and Ms. Peyton to go over the proposed changes.
Thank you. This policy, Health Insurance Benefit Credits, is the Board of County Commissioners is committed to the health and safety and welfare of its employees and their dependents. All full-time employees are eligible for health insurance, including general medical, dental, and vision coverage as part of their employment. If employees or their dependents are covered under another plan and decide during the open enrollment that they do not wish to take the county health insurance benefits, the county offers optional health insurance benefit credits. The purpose of this policy is to establish guidelines for offering that benefit. This is a benefit that is offered to full-time employees. The changes are that the two, there are two tiers of the Health Insurance Benefit Credit available to employees. If you drop one tier, meaning that you're not covering one of your dependents, you are eligible to receive a $700 benefit or a three days of vacation that will be applied the first pay period of July. If you're dropping two tiers, which is typically sometimes what we see where an employee is not covering themselves or, and/or family members, you are eligible for a $1,000 cash monetary benefit or five days of vacation. The benefit, if elected, will be applied again the first pay period of July. With the, if an employee submits the Health Insurance Benefit Credit after the deadline set by the Department of Human Resources, the employee's selected benefit credit will be reduced by 25% of the selected benefit. The Health Insurance Benefit will be applied on the first payroll following when it was submitted to the department, HR department. Any employee who does not submit his or her benefit credit form before August the first of each year will forfeit eligibility for the Health Insurance Benefit Credit for the fiscal year. Those are the changes that were submitted to the policy.
Let's start.
Any?
In summary, the two largest changes are, in previously, three days, the very last page of your sheet, and correct me if I'm wrong, please.
That's...
Last pages of your sheet did not have the three days or the five days which were previously afforded to employees that opted out. Those have been restored for employees that opt out. So that is similar to the way it used to be. It was simply a change that was made, and we're making the change back, or asking you to consider the change back and the 25% reduction because staff work so diligently to have those in place come July 1st. To make changes after July 1st, it's, there's some difficulty. So, those are the two significant changes.
Yes, that's correct.
So what are you looking for today from the commissioners?
We would need you to approve this policy as revised.
Okay, if the commissioners are comfortable moving forward, that would be the motion to approve it as revised. We would need a motion for that. Second. Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
As staff is in the open enrollment period, that's very much appreciated for the expedience. It restores the days that were previously afforded staff. Thank you. And the cost savings I want to mention too, to the county and the healthcare savings that if they don't sign up for it. So it's overall a good situation for both parties.
Thank you. End of the 2000 legislative session re... You told, you want to do something? Okay, let's go back to staff, and we do have a, I didn't ask Rob Slogum if he had a report. Sorry about that. Let's go back to staff reports.
I'm sorry, I do. I have a board appointment request from the Economic Development Commission. They would like to reappoint James Herbert and Josh Martin to second three-year terms through June 30th, 2021, and also appoint J. Randall Thompson to a first full three-year term through June 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for those approvals, any further discussion? I've only ever known Randall as Randy Thompson.
That is him.
So it's Randall Thompson, okay. So we do have a motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 5-0. Okay, any other staff reports? Mr. Slogum? Anything to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving right along, let's do citizens' participation. We have any citizens here today care to participate?
Yeah, might as well.
Okay, name and address, or we don't need your address, it's your name, sir.
Donnie Ravis, Hagerstown, Maryland. My concern is, and I'm not sure exactly who to ask, so we'll start with you. Whenever we're doing these red light cameras now at intersections throughout, I've noticed some more and more have been popping up. Am I right to, like, on the Downsville Pike, it looks like they're putting up new poles, new steel poles, where there's already existing poles, you know anything about this? Or is that state? Would that be state?
Actually, it's the city of Hagerstown is doing the red light cameras.
Okay, so the city?
City of Hagerstown is doing two red light cameras right now that are active. The county is not, the county has not even entertained those at this point.
All right, all right, that's why I wanted to know, because it'd be, all right, I'll seek that out at the city then. Thank you.
Any other citizens here today care to participate? Okay, now we're to the end of the 2018 legislative session report. Mr. Bruce Bariana, any of the commissioners know him? How are you, Mr. Bariana?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, and members of the commission. It's a pleasure to be here, and good afternoon to all of you. Once again, I want to profoundly thank the commissioners for allowing me the honor and the opportunity to represent the county and the county commissioners during this past legislative session. I enjoyed it immensely and worked with your county attorney, with your county administrator, and tried to keep you apprised during the course of the legislative session. I believe you have the final tracking charts that I have for the House and the Senate in terms of legislation that either was directed towards Washington County or general statewide legislation that would impact the county from a governmental standpoint. If I may, Mr. President, just, I'd like to just go over a couple of items and highlight them, and of course, please ask me any questions that you would like. Not in any order of priority, a couple of items. House Bill 1 from the 19, excuse me, from the 2017 session, the governor overrode it. It was a sick leave legislation that was overridden in January of this year and took effect 30 days thereafter. It, of course, has been in effect since January, and it does affect county governments. And I know you're aware of it, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that law is in effect and affects Washington County, all county and local governments in the state. House Bill 807 and Senate Bill 516 of the 18th session, already signed by the governor. Tremendous victory for Mako and MML, the Highway User Funds. Commissioner Barr, I'm sure you particularly are, it's been a long effort on your part. And that will be tremendously helpful to the county over the next five years. It's not a final official, long-term solution, but it will be for the next five years and give some stability in budgeting, predictability, and anticipation by Washington County and the other counties, and hopefully will be further rectified in the future. There was legislation statewide trying to mandate collective bargaining in the various community colleges, and wanted to bring that to your attention. That legislation failed, did not pass. It was somewhat controversial, there was a very strong opposition to it in the Senate Finance Committee. There's also a pending Supreme Court case, which will be decided soon, that'll have some impact on it. And I know, Ms. County Attorney, you're well aware of that, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. As you know, the facilities, public facilities bond authorization legislation passed and was signed by the governor, Senate Bill 889 and House Bill 1321. So you're good for your next period of time. The Senate Bill 1265, the Maryland Safety to Teach Act, what was passed, signed by the governor right after the session. It applies to all counties and does have flexibility, as I discussed with your county attorney, so that there will be flexibility in terms of what you need to do in the various public schools here in the county. And then, um, there was, there was legislation which extended, well, House Bill 243 and Senate Bill 968 continued the rural broadband board and their activity. I know that'll be of interest to Washington County. Western Maryland specifically referenced in the bill. It extends the date by which the commission will continue to exist. It'll require greater impact and involvement of the problems and what the situation is in the rural counties in Western Maryland, on the eastern shore, as you're trying to expand for constituents and economic development broadband communications. I worked very closely with your legislative delegation in the House and in the Senate, very cooperatively. I think they worked very effectively in what they produced as legislators for the county. As I indicated, I was pleased to work with the county staff at all levels and found them extremely receptive. I wanted the county commissioners to know that. And I did attend some of the county commissioner, excuse me, the Washington County delegation meetings, but regularly checked in with the Washington County legislators to get their perspective and to make myself available to them as it relates to Washington County, you know, as well. Be happy to answer any questions. I know you received bond money, and it was, I think it was a good session for Washington County, and I'm not trying to take credit for it. I, you have got good legislators that are in the respective committees that can really cover the myriad of issues that affect Washington County. And lastly, I hope you all will come to the crab feast at TOS on the 18th of July. Be happy to have you come into the tent and just have a good time and network with your colleagues from other jurisdictions. Be happy to answer any questions there may be. And again, I thank you so very much for, I think this is my second or third year representing the county, and I'm very pleased to do it. And I would just say, finally, I regularly, because I would see them in the halls and what have you, regularly checked in with the Mako lobbying staff to make myself available and, you know, ask anything you wanted me to do, and that was very harmonious, very cooperative.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Bariana? Thank you for your service.
Thank you again. It's always a pleasure to be in Hagerstown and Washington County.
Looking forward to seeing you again soon.
I will see you all soon, I'll see you down at Mako as well. Thank you very much, good afternoon.
Okay, next is the teen pregnancy prevention proclamation, going to be presented by, on behalf of the county commissioners. And Carol Laurie, would you just like to add a few words before we present the proclamation? Or do you...
I would say that we're here today, I'm here as an advocate in the community to keep the issue of teen pregnancy prevention alive in our community. Although our actual numbers have gone down, for the last 20 years at least, we've hovered at the third and fourth worst teen birth rate in the state of Maryland. So there is yet a lot of work to do. We do have organizations in the community, and the school board, nonprofits, and the medical community that's represented here today. I'm diligently working to impact and educate our youth and their parents so that they'll make healthy choices.
Thank you. Okay, next will be the Building Safety Month proclamation. And see, Mr. Eichelberger, Mr. Lung, and Scott, whoever all's here with the county could give us a little bit about the Building Safety Month, and then we'll present a proclamation.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Rich Eichelberger with Construction, Tim Lung with Plan Review and Permitting, and Frank Quillen is our chief plans examiner and also deputy code official, and Terry Pfizer is our chief building inspector. I believe Becky Gander was to be here, she was unexpectedly out of town. So just wanted to take a few moments and give you some brief information on the public, on the Building Safety Month. As you know, Governor Hogan has also issued a similar proclamation. And the only thing I really wanted to add to it would be just some, some local information from our standpoint is that I want you to, the commissioners, along with the building community, whether it be local or someone looking to relocate here, that our goal is to partner with all of our customers to assist them to complete their projects on or before time added and below budget through the use of the building codes and also the existing building code. Also providing guidance using our knowledge of past projects of similar nature, also through the uses of equivalencies, modifications, and alternative materials and methods. With using all of these things for all of our projects, big or small, residential, commercial, or industrial, I think that we can reach out and help anyone who is looking to construct anything in Washington County that we can find a way to partner with them and get them what they need while all along maintaining our, what we've been subscribed to do, which is protect the health, life, and safety of our residents of Washington County.
I don't really have a whole lot else to add to what Rich has said, but as far as my department is concerned, my department is at the front end of the building process. So it's my staff that often, is the first point of contact with folks that are, that are coming in and initiating the building process and seeking permits. And one of the questions they often get is, why am I required to have a permit for this? And I think the recognition that the county commissioners are giving to building safety goes a long way in, in raising awareness of the general public of why permits are required and then moving on to the, the building code requirements. So of course, safety, building safety is something we, we look at every day, but it's always good to have a, a special recognition to raise awareness even more.
Okay, anything else to add? I'd like to ask Commissioner Barr to present a proclamation.
I'm especially honored to present this as someone in everyday life vows for permits, both electrical and building. We know the cooperation and professionalism of these gentlemen and their staff in particular through customer service and just an all-around general attitude of helping the citizens of Washington County to, as Rich said, to do it right, do it on time, under budget, and just a level of cooperation and a spirit of working together. So gentlemen, thank you for your service each and every day. On behalf of my fellow county commissioners and all the citizens of Washington County, we, we do present basically to, I guess, eighty West Baltimore Street, Building Safety Month proclamation. Washington County is committed to recognizing our growth and strength, which depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens. International codes, the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most counties and states. These modern building safety codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters that can occur, such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fire, and earthquakes. And Building Safety Month is an excellent opportunity to educate the public, to increase awareness on the role of building safety and fire prevention officials. Local and state building departments and federal agencies play in protecting lives and property. And whereas building codes save lives, the theme for Building Safety Month 2018 encourages all citizens to raise awareness of the importance of partnering with officials to build stronger and safer communities. Therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Building Safety Month in Washington County. Gentlemen, again, thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else coming up? Get Scott up here.
Terry, can you see a different? Oh. Great, thank you.
Review and Ranking. Sarah Buchanan, Office of Grant Management. How are you this afternoon?
Doing well. How are you doing this afternoon? As stated, Susan Buchanan, Director Office of Grant Management, I'm here this afternoon requesting a motion to, a move to accept the preliminary project descriptions as prioritized by this board and then forward the ranking to Tri-County Council of Western Maryland for funding consideration. Then further move to allow applicants to proceed with application submission to the Appalachian Regional Commission for those projects that receive funding recommendation from the Tri-County Council of Western Maryland and to accept grant funding for county projects approved and provided by the Appalachian Regional Commission. As part of the annual A R C funding program, Tri-County Council of Western Maryland, the local administrator of these federal funds, requests the county review and prioritize projects submitted for grant funding consideration. A review committee consisting of the county administrator, directors from the offices of planning and zoning, business development, grant management, and the director of engineering has reviewed the projects and assigned a preliminary ranking. The Board of County Commissioners has the final authority to review and rank the proposals at its sole discretion prior to submission to Tri-County Council. A R C's preliminary project description packages were distributed in February to municipalities, educational agencies, healthcare providers, and nonprofit agencies, inviting them to submit proposals for funding through A R C. There are two categories of funding available, area development, which requires fifty-fifty match, and local access road, which requires no matching. This year's A R C funding for Allegheny, Garrett, and Washington Counties is expected to be approximately 1.5 million for area, area development projects and 2.5 million for the local access road projects. Funding requests for Washington Counties area development projects includes five proposed projects requesting $574,121 in A R C funding and six projects requesting 4.8 million in funding from Transportation Equity Act of the Twenty-First Century Local Access Road category. The total requested funding for the eleven projects is $5,374,121. If awarded today, if awarded, not today, but if awarded in the future by A R C, the local access road projects submitted by Washington County would then reduce the cost to the county to get those projects completed. And I'll turn now to the spreadsheet that was provided that listed each project. The top portion of that spreadsheet is, contains the area development projects. The first project is the Maryland Theaters Project. They submitted the project for the furnishings and theatrical equipment associated with their expansions, and the amount of the request is 250,000. The second ranked project is the Town of Clear Springs Inflow and Infiltration Upgrade Project requesting $30,000. The third project, United Way of Washington County, for the Western Maryland Nonprofit Professional Development Opportunity Program, requesting $9,121. The fourth project, Washington County Public School Submission of Creating Computational Thinkers, a curriculum, requesting $160,000. And the fifth project submitted by the City of Hagerstown is the Life Safety Codes Upgrade Fund requesting $125,000. Going down to this second category of local access roads. The first project is Washington County's Eastern Boulevard Extension Phase One requesting 1 million. And then the second is the same project, Eastern Boulevard Phase Two, and another 1 million request. The third ranked project, Washington County's Creighton Boulevard Extension Phase Two requesting 1 million in funds. The fourth ranked was proposed by the City of Hagerstown, Professional Court Widening requesting 500,000. The fifth ranked submitted by the Town of Boonesboro for Warrior Boulevard Phase One requesting 1 million. And the sixth project submitted by the Town of Williamsport was Route 11 Mill and Overlay Project requesting $300,000. This is the, the ranking that was provided by the committee that reviewed these projects. However, it is at the sole discretion of this board to make any changes that you would wish before we would forward them to Tri-County Council.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners? If none, we need a motion to approve as, and move to accept the preliminary project descriptions.
Second.
Okay, motion of second for the recommended motion. Any further discussion?
Terry, I'm going to abstain as the current chair of Tri-County Council.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention and thank Amy Jacobs coming down from Tri-County Council to be present for this.
Where's Amy? Give us a wave. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Baker, Commissioners, I'd also like to say that Susan has done a fantastic job. And over the past several years with Susan and Jim and Scott Hobbs here, we have four public-private partnerships that are extending roadways, which is improving economic development, but also transportation network relief. So these roadway projects, in addition to the other projects up above, are extremely helpful in, even in our bond ratings, they were highly, highly regarded in others' review of county and, and how it's spending and using leveraging money, borrowing as little as possible, but using A R C monies as, as much as possible to improve economic development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The word in the office was that she actually trained Jim Hovis.
She did. That's the word in the office.
That would explain a lot.
Okay. A land preservation, parks, and recreation plan adoption, Ms. Baker. How are you this afternoon?
Good, sir, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
My name is Jill Baker. I am chief planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. As stated, I'm here today to present the final draft of the Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan. This is a planning document that typically is updated on a three-year cycle as required by Maryland state law. The preparation of this update is a prerequisite for county participation in the Maryland Program Open Space Local Side Program. That's what funds our parks upgrades and the municipal park upgrades. They provide annual grants for the acquisition of land for conservation and park purposes as well as development of the public recreation facilities. Funding, as I said, of the project open space funding is shared with the nine municipalities across the county. The plan was developed in accordance with guidance from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. We also sought input from the Washington County Planning Commission and the County Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Public input was also sought for this document through public input meetings, public comment sessions, and a targeted survey. Staff also notified each of the local municipalities and several stakeholder groups of the public comment period, and the public hearing for this document was held on April 10th, 2018. At that time, no comments were received. So the document's being presented today with amendments as requested by the Maryland Department of Natural Resources as part of their overall review, and we are requesting today an adoption of that document. We prevent, we presented all that information as attachments online because it's a 133-page document. I try to save a few trees when we're planning for parks. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions, Commissioners? If we have none, we will have to move to, well, we don't have to, they're asking us to adopt. So we'll need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second for the recommended motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, four oh. Okay, next, next on the agenda is the deliberation consensus decision on application for zoning map amendment, RZ 17005. Ms. Baker?
Mr. Baker, Mr. President, it's come to my recent attention that there's some questions and concerns regarding this, and I would like to make a motion that we postpone this for a week or two to give us some time to dig a little deeper into this matter.
I mean, you can just do a consensus. If the consensus of the board is to remove it from the agenda and reschedule it at a later time, you can do that.
Well, I guess we'll get, you'll get with staff and, I think Mr. Barr might have some questions, so he'll get with staff and then we'll put it back on the schedule. So that's up to the Commissioners. Okay, so, Mr. Barr, we'll get with you and we'll put it back on the agenda.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Sarah Greaves, how are you today again?
I'm well, thank you. Sarah Greaves, Chief Financial Officer, here to present to you for informational purposes only, information on the property tax credit for public safety officers that you've may, you may have heard about. The Public Safety Officer Property Tax Credit, House Bill 979, was originally passed in the 2017 legislative session of the General Assembly. This bill is enabling legislation that gives local governments the authority to issue a tax credit up to $2,500 to public safety officers against their principal dwellings, county real property taxes. A public safety officer is defined as a firefighter, an emergency medical technician, a correctional officer, a police officer, or deputy sheriff employed full-time by a public safety agency in the county or municipality where the individual resides, or a volunteer firefighter for a public safety agency where the individual resides. Currently, two counties in the state of Maryland have implemented this credit at an amount not to exceed $2,500, net the homestead credit. These jurisdictions include Anarundel County and Baltimore City, and they have implemented the credit for different periods of time, one, five years, I think between five and ten years, and have required that each participant apply each year. County governments may establish by law the amount of the property tax credit, the duration of the credit, and additional eligibility requirements for public safety officers to qualify for the property tax credit. Factors affecting the financial impact of the credit include the number of eligible public safety officers, the taxable assessment, the amount of the property tax credit, up to $2,500, and also the cost to administer the credit. The size of the potential pool of individuals who may qualify for this credit in Washington County is currently unclear. The census has stated that there are 2,483 individuals who they would classify as possibly public safety officers in Washington County. Through research, staff has been able to confirm 2,154 of these. If you take 2,483 possible individuals times the maximum amount of the $2,500 credit, it could have an impact of around $6.2 million on the county. However, factors such as how many of these individuals own a home, the accessible base of their property, the amount of the tax credit would all be players in determining the final fiscal impact. There will also be a cost to the county to administer but this is their first year implementing this credit, so they had estimates, but no actual figures of how much it's actually going to cost their jurisdictions.
Maybe I don't understand, up to $2,500, so it's not a flat dollar amount?
Yes, that's correct. It would be up to the board's discretion based on the way the law is written.
So the two jurisdictions that are providing, that are participating, do you know what their?
They are up to, it is the max amount, $2,500, they are offering that credit, yes.
So the enabling legislation require, I mean, allows the counties or jurisdictions to go up to $2,500?
Yes.
And they both are.
And they both are, yes.
But you wouldn't have to go to $2,500, you could go at any amount.
Of course.
If it's sometime, we wanted to look at that.
Those that are participating have some other qualifications that they imposed as well?
Yes, because it would also be up to the board's discretion, you know, additional eligibility requirements, such as if you were a firefighter, how long have you been a firefighter, information like that. So there would definitely be further conversation that would need to be had surrounding this.
I think one county that was considering it had allocated a certain amount, said it was a first come, first served basis. Once that amount was exhausted, no one else was eligible until the next year and after we apply. Baltimore. Each year, first come, first served. What's that? If you had a set amount, each year was first come, first served. That's right. Based on the criteria.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Kirk, I believe also Baltimore City was using this as an incentive to try to attract people to come into their city. I think that was a driving force behind the reason that they implemented the credit.
Yeah, it appears Baltimore City had a lot of, a lot of employees, people qualified, but lived outside of the city limits of Baltimore City. So they were trying to provide an incentive, an economic development initiative to keep people within the city limits.
Yeah, and they wanted, yeah, they wanted them to live in the city limits, that's what they, that's why they, that's one of the reasons why they did it.
Right. And again, they, each of those jurisdictions had different levels of time, so one for five years, one, I think, up to 10 years, and then, so that would also be a factor to consider.
The way I read the legislation, it's up to either the county or the municipality, the municipality can also offer credit as well, is that?
I think they, I think they can on the real property tax relating to the municipality.
Do we know the feelings, the thoughts of our municipalities? Is this something they're considering?
This has not been a conversation that I have had with any of the municipalities. It's really just informational for you at this point.
Right, because I think, and I, and I don't know if there's any other municipalities other than Baltimore City around the state of Maryland, there may be, but when we, when we were doing some research, Baltimore City and Anarundel County were the only two that we found.
Right.
I mean, there may be some, but I, we have not, we have not come across any of those, so, not just our municipalities, but I'm not sure any other municipalities have weighed in on that as well.
Yeah.
I guess absent further direction from the board. Yeah, well, I was, I was here reading, I was asking, I wanted to ask a question. So, back down to your last paragraph, it says the size of the potential pool of individuals, stated that there's 2,483 individuals who could be classified as a public safety officer in Washington County. Through research, staff was able to confirm two, so you're saying we have, you think we have at least 2,154 people that work for, or meet that definition and could possibly qualify for something?
That is correct, could possibly qualify. Whether they live in the county is unknown at this point, but yes.
They obviously have to own a house in Washington County.
Some could be both, right? Somebody.
Some could be, some could be, yeah.
Or whatever.
Right, gotcha. And that's right, I mean, you could be, I mean, you could be a paid person at a jurisdiction down the road, but be a volunteer here in Washington County and fall into the second part of that definition.
Correct.
So, I mean, these numbers are, I think, Sarah dug through these, and that's the best estimate that we could come up with from a staff perspective, but that really is a, that's a difficult number to come up with.
It is difficult, and also keep in mind too, if someone is not living in the county right now, but works in the county, and, I mean, they could always move, so there is that potential to reach that.
Okay, commissioners, we need some direction, some thoughts. We could just get back with her on an individual basis, if you wanted to do that, and give you some time to think about it, discuss it with staff, and then give staff direction as how we may want to proceed. Just not suggestions, I need some.
Yeah, I, I think that, I mean, this issue came up, and I think the direction from the board was for staff to go back and research the issue and what other counties were doing and what information we could come up with, and I think that's what staff has done, so that's why we wanted to provide it to you for informational purposes and.
Did you reach out to every county?
I did not reach out to every county, but there is information available on the web to suggest which counties have implemented this, and only two out of all the Maryland counties have.
So how many, how many have not moved, have discussed it, or even taken a vote, are there any other counties that have taken a vote on it not to move forward with it?
Howard County actually had legislation proposed, that's how they do it in Howard County, but it did not pass, and it was eventually withdrawn.
Same as PG County.
PG County too. So those two counties, but we're not aware of any other jurisdictions that have even, even had, it's kind of a new discussion.
Okay, any other questions, comments, commissioners? Okay, they'll be, we'll be reaching out to staff and deciding how to move forward and what to do next.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think I've covered everything on our open session agenda, so we need a motion to go back into closed session?
I moved.
Reason stated?
Second.
Motion of second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, 5-0, thank you.